Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the Board of Trustees meeting. I'd like to call that meeting to order. This is the Board of Trustees of the town of Buena Vista, Colorado. The date is March 28th, 2023. The time is 7:13. Paula, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Faye, here. Trustee Cobb, here. Trustee Hilton Hinga.
Here.
Trustee Jenkins.
Here.
Trustee Luttrezzy.
Here.
Trustee Rowe.
Here.
And Trustee Swisher.
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. As you entered, there was a sign-in sheet. If you would like to speak at public comment, make sure to sign in if you're speaking in the public hearing. You should also note that you're here for the public hearing versus whatever other topic you'd like to speak about. Trustees, you have an agenda. Are there any changes to the proposed agenda? Is there a motion to approve it as written?
Second.
We have Luttrezzy and Cobb all in favor.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. In addition to that, we have a consent agenda. Consent agenda includes various meetings, minutes of meetings of the committees that operate in the town of Buena Vista. And a few other items. One of which is appointments to our advisory boards. And we really appreciate the time that people devote to these advisory board positions. We want to thank a longtime member of the beautification board, Diana Look, for her service to that board. And we want to note that an alternate is being appointed to that position, Dorothy Distel. And she will be a regular voting member. Also, Diana Weir is being appointed as an alternate voting member to that beautification advisory board. Thank you all very much for your service. Are there any questions or concerns about the consent agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
So Luttrezzy and Swisher, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Paul is collecting the sign-in sheet for public comment. And you will have three minutes. As I call your name, I'd like for you to approach the podium and then give us your name and address. I'm going to get my timer going here.
Does it have a cute ring when it goes off?
It does. It has a cute ring. Okay. Okay, so it looks like everybody has basically general comments. So we'll start with Jack Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. Jack Jones, 328 Warrenwood Drive. So, Mayor and Board of Trustees, I want to make a public comment this evening on the topic of the Carbonade Street development, specifically to advocate for the continued involvement of Joseph Typle, our current planning director, who, much to our dismay, is a developer, submitted his resignation last week. Joseph has been a critical part of this project from the very beginning of Fading West's involvement. Our team has really enjoyed working with him. He's extremely good at his job. He's always active with the town's best interest in mind. Occasionally, that meant pushing back against us and some of our thoughts and plans as a developer and guiding us to solutions that were better positioned to receive the support of this board and this community. Many of you are likely aware that the Carbonade Street project was awarded $1.65 million in grant funding via Dole's Innovative Housing Incentives Program in recent weeks. And while Fading West was very happy to support this progress, this process, the town of BV was ultimately the applicant and recipient for this grant. And Joseph really led this effort on the town side, I'm sure with some help from staff. But that grant received every dollar that we requested. And I think that that really speaks volumes to just how effective his work on this project has been thus far. But to be clear, we're not just advocating for Joseph's continued involvement on this project because of what he's already contributed. There's a lot of work left to do. And in addition to the incentives grant that's already been awarded, there's another $3 million or so of critical grant funding requested for this project. And as we continue to work with state agencies on these grants, Joseph's involvement will be invaluable. He has spent countless hours swapping emails, on phone calls, and in virtual meetings with all the relevant administrators at these state agencies, discussing the intricacies of this project and ultimately building rapport with the people who ultimately will be making recommendations for funding. Losing Joseph at this stage would really hurt this project as we move forward pursuing these funding sources. And we really want this project to succeed. And for that reason, I really hope the town and the board can find a way to keep Joseph involved. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Jack. Next on our list is Paul Andrews.
Hello, Paul Andrews, 27, 999 County Road. Three of one, same topic. I just wanted to say a few words to recognize the work of Joseph, who submitted his resignation as our planning director last week. The best funerals I've been to are the ones that celebrated the gifts and achievements of the people who've passed on rather than mourning their loss. So I wanted to use my three minutes not to share my concerns about the loss of Joseph to our community, but to focus on his strengths and contributions. I've been nursing along the crossin' for over a year now, and I've been grateful for many of the gifts and luck that have made this possibility. Among those include Joseph being our planning director during that time. It's a common refrain amongst other developers, as well as architects, engineers, surveyors, business and landowners, that so much has been possible because Joseph has been that planning director. So tonight's thanks, not just personal, but on behalf of all those other people that Joseph has worked with and impacted over the last year. The question I ask myself since I had the news last week is what makes Joseph such a great planning director? And I think that's a relevant question as you look for his successor in the near future. The obvious ones are his deep knowledge of the planning process, his quick mind, his extraordinary work ethic, and ability to communicate clearly but firmly, as well as his expertise in the development code that we implement here in BV. But that wasn't enough to capture why he's such a great planning director. I think the special source that makes that is his ability to say, "Why not?" And yes, we can. And that ability to be not afraid of something new and different is essential in a great planning director. I've been on enough boards and executive committees to know that when you have a large group of people making decisions, it's easy for those to be conservative and safe. And it's hard for brave ideas and new thinking to make their way through a bureaucratic process. So my ask of the board is twofold. First, as you go through the transition to acknowledge its complexity and to generously give and take as much time as Joseph is willing to give to provide the transition to all the projects he's working on. And secondly, that as you look for a successor, bear in mind his strength of nurturing along creative and new ideas. And to be an incubator that encourages developers to think somewhat outside the box and bring new, good ideas to our community. And we're here to help in whatever way we can resource ourselves.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul. And now we have Brad Wong.
I have something to hand out.
Okay.
Go ahead and start with my address before we hit the clock. I'm Brad Wong, 9426 Wickerdale Court, Highlands Ranch, Colorado. So I'm going to start now. Good evening, Mayor Faye, Board of Trustees, and Town Administrator. My name is Brad Wong. I'm the owner of the Buena Vista Pack Roll Race. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today to have this most important conversation. I am here on behalf of the Buena Vista Pack Roll Race Committee to better explain and further the communication on this great and historic race. Buena Vista Pack Roll Race is 50 years old. This race was the brainchild of local Oscar Chapa and legend Curtis Emery, who had the idea of the four man's triple crown after Secretariat won the triple crown of horse racing in 1973. This race has been the traditional leg of the triple crown of pack roll racing, which runs three Sundays back-to-back through the summers. Buena Vista Pack Roll Race is important as the foundation of the summer heritage sport of Colorado, yes, a state sport. In 2015, there was a last-minute change of the guards of the race. With less than 60 days before the race, the race director gave it up to Richard Eman. With my assistance, Richard's efforts were monumental in pulling off that race. We have managed to own the race since. For the past eight years, this race has started and finished without issue. Buena Vista Pack Roll Race has held permits with the Department of Interior, Chaffey County, and the town of Buena Vista, with a successful and safe race each year. Even during the 2020 season, the Buena Vista Pack Roll Race was successful in having its event in the middle of a pandemic. It has been a traditional request of the town to have all your surrounding permits in before filling out the town's permit. As you can see before you, on October 6th, 2022, eight weeks after our race, the process began for us. By January 31st, 2023, the county permit was completed and turned in. That same day, the permit was turned into the town as well. Buena Vista Pack Roll Race is the only race standing with surrounding permits. No other race has even filled out a permit with BLM or Chaffey County. The Buena Vista Pack Roll Race Committee would like a favorable decision on the facts that are laid out in our appeal. Please consider a yes vote on the appeal, as to no vote will impact so many future events in Buena Vista, Colorado. It has been an honor to be a part of the Buena Vista Pack Roll Race and Curtis Emery Day. The town of Buena Vista has meant so much to our Pack Roll Racing Committee or community that year after year, teams from all over the U.S. show up and compete. We are here to keep history alive. Thank you for your consideration. I also want to point out that, you know, this race is named, and this area of this race is named after, you know, the legend here, Curtis Emery, who's passed away. It's just really super important that we know that this committee is built around the love Curtis put into the community. And, you know, we are Curtis Emery Day, and we would love to keep that alive. Thank you for your time.
Very much.
Now we have Lindsay Lightizer.
I don't have a whole lot to add. I think you all got the letter of appeal that I drafted. I did want to say if you had any questions or needed any documentation, I'm happy to provide that. Anything I can do to clear up anything that wasn't made clear in the letter. I think we're all pretty blindsided by the denial of our permit. But we really appreciate the fact that you're willing to consider an appeal. But yeah, this race is all, it's really important to each member of the committee. It's not just Brad, although he's the, you know, the heart of it all. But he's looped in so many people that are a part of this community, and not just the people in the committee, but organizations, entities, and other locals. And we all want to see this race succeed and standard local ownership. So, but like I said, if there's anything I can add to the appeal, please let me know. I'm happy to make clear anything that I didn't in the letter. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have Rebecca Hines with the search and rescue.
My name is Lindsay Lightizer. I'm at 24600 185 Buena Vista. I don't have a whole lot to add. I think you all got the letter of appeal that I drafted. I did want to say if you had any questions or needed any documentation, I'm happy to provide that. Anything I can do to clear up anything that wasn't made clear in the letter. I think we're all pretty blindsided by the denial of our permit. But we really, really appreciate the fact that you're willing to consider an appeal. But yeah, this race is all, it's really important to each member of the committee. It's not just Brad, although he's the, you know, the heart of it all. But he's looped in so many people that are a part of this community, and not just the people in the committee, but organizations, entities, and other locals. And we all want to see this race succeed and standard local ownership. So, but like I said, if there's anything I can add to the appeal, please let me know. I'm happy to make clear anything that I didn't in the letter. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have Rebecca Hines with the search and rescue.
Rebecca Hines, 2083 South Pleasant Avenue in Buena Vista, Colorado. And the event director of Chaffey County Search and Rescue North, and have held us positions since 2017. I want to let everyone know that Chaffey County Search and Rescue North does not receive any funding from state, county, or town of Buena Vista. Our organization is 100% volunteer and 100% funded through donations, fundraising, and grants. I'm here to provide support for the longstanding Community Bureau Race, organized by the Buena Vista Pack Race Committee. Because we receive financial support from this longstanding event, SAR participates in the borough race in a support capacity each year and has for many years. We offer volunteers, comms, radios, and medical support for the borough race, organized by the Buena Vista Pack Race. In return for our participation and involvement in this longstanding event, search and rescue receives substantial financial considerations from the Buena Vista Pack Race Committee. I can't say exactly how many years SAR has participated, but I can say that we've participated the last eight years that I have been with search and rescue. Since search and rescue has a longstanding relationship with the borough race organized by the Bureau Buena Vista Pack Race Committee, we have it as a reoccurring event on our calendar, along with the Collegiate Peaks Trail Run and Conservation Camp and a couple other events. As such, we do not accept any other event applications for those same dates. SAR was recently contacted by Josh Hadley at Chaffey County EMS regarding our involvement in the 2023 Borough Race, permit applications submitted by Buena Vista Pack Race, and are working with both entities to provide the necessary personnel and support to meet the county's event permit requirements. Due to the increased volume of SAR requests, search and rescue receives regarding their volunteers for events, we have implemented an application process for new events. I can attest to the fact that no one has submitted an application to SAR regarding a borough race in BV other than the Buena Vista Pack Race during Gold Rush Days. We also have not been contacted by any seeking an application for a new event during Gold Rush Days. Regardless of an application, if an application is submitted for this timeframe, SAR would deny the request due to our prior and ongoing commitments with the Buena Vista Pack Race event during Gold Rush Days. Rather than have event permits be first come, first served, BV should implement a first right of refusal system for longstanding events and organizations that have participated and supported our community. Allowing a first come, first served process appears to set a precedent that obviously has unforeseen unintended consequences. I hope the town makes the right decision and honors the longstanding relationship established between Buena Vista and the race pack committee. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Rebecca. So now we have one more speaker. John O'Brien.
Hello. I'm John O'Brien, 37950 Mountain View Drive. I'm here today, I felt compelled to respond to some of the comments made by the public speakers on Chapter 19 at your last trustee meeting. It kind of, there were like some common themes, and I'd like to address those. First of all, one of the common themes was about the volunteers that served on the committee. So, we are a certified local government. As a certified local government, the state requires that 40% of the commissioners meet the state's professional and educational requirements. We have exceeded that every time, but it's a state mandate that our commissioners are educated and have professional credentials. In addition, we require it to be trained and have continuing education. That's a requirement. We document that every year in a report, and we're visited by the state's representative once a year. So it's not like we're a bunch of guys off the street that just showed up and, you know, just do our thing. We're a certified local government, okay? So that's one comment. The second one is that we're two people or three people that inferred the architectural design guidelines in Chapter 19. It's a delay to the permitting process and a burden. I want to give you two examples. The first person who was talking about this was a representative of Viking and CKS. And what she said is, you know, this is a big burden to anybody trying to develop here. With those two properties, CKS and Viking, we were given a set of drawings to comment on on a Tuesday. We had a hearing on that Thursday, gave them a written narrative and comments. We had two days to do that. We did it. The other comment was made by Sarah. You know, she owns the building next to the grave. And she inferred that it was going to be a burden and all that stuff. First of all, her property's not even in the MU MS district. So the discussion for Chapter 19 didn't even apply to that property. That's number one. Number two, two years ago, when her husband called me for comments on it, we met the next day. We have never delayed a permit or property, and we're not a burden. Third thing that was commented on, somebody said the UDC is adequate for design guidelines. That is patently false. The UDC is for development. Chapter 19 and the architectural design guidelines, it's parent deal. That's for preservation. We got preservation over here. We got development over here. They're completely different. And that's it. Thank you.
Good timing. Okay, that concludes our public comment period.
And I don't see anyone that's on.
Oh, thank you.
Raise their hands, but if they would want to speak, we would ask that you raise your hands. A second, Mayor. I just want to make sure. I know there will be a couple. We're pretty good. Thank you.
Great. So now we have some staff reports, starting with the treasurer.
Good evening, everybody. Good to see you all. My report is on page 66 of your packet. And I'll be brief and highlight a few things and certainly open to questions if you have anything. First off, I just want to say that we had a really good week of field work with our auditors earlier this month. And that's wrapped up. And I believe them when they say that things look, things look good and we're well underway to completing that process. We'll be bringing them back in tune to present to you kind of a conclusion to that process. And that'll wrap up the annual audit. So that's in good order. A couple of things in my report I just wanted to point out. I keep adding new things that I think will be interesting to you all. But with all the discussions on grants, I was thinking, well, I wonder how many we have currently active, plus all the things we've submitted and are planning to submit. So I pulled some things together. This is also in preparation to hand off to our new senior finance clerk, Lisa Brooker, who will soon be taking on her role. Part of that is administering these grants. So you can see that on our plate, we have at least 37. I know there's a few more hanging out there that I haven't counted yet. But 37 grants that are either under contract, awarded, submitted, and we're waiting to hear on the results of that, or we're planning, our team is actively planning to submit this year. So 37 grants and across all of those, that's a little over 17 and a half million dollars in grant money. So it's pretty substantial for a town our size and a budget, operating budget our size. So I bring that up to you all kind of as a brad to our organization and what we're all working towards. But also awareness that this is a pretty significant workload and obligation that we put ourselves. And so I'd like to continue to share this type of information with you. And as the town considers future grants, we can have discussion around what we're currently under contract for or obligated to do. But good, good stuff there. So if you have any questions with that, I'm happy to talk about it. Also, continuing to show you adjustments or amendments to the budget as we go out throughout the year. The main change from my last report on this one is towards the end of that table. Now that we have January sales tax actuals in, I'm going to include those so you can kind of see how that's tracking along with the budget amendments that you all have approved so far. So just very quickly, at the bottom of that table, you can see, taking January sales tax numbers into account, we are projecting a surplus of $29,000 on our natural fund. And so far, a deficit of $5,000 on our water fund. So is that my three minutes?
You get four.
I'll get four. All right, then I better get after it. So look at that table. If you have any questions, again, let me know. And then finally, looking at January sales taxes, they did come in strong. 15, a little over 15% over budget, 16% over 2022 for that same month. And with that, I will take any questions you may have.
I want to make the comment, thank you for adding that grant information. I saw that super, super neat sealed things that are going on and just the credit of the town staff doing all the hard work to get those. It's super impressive to see. So thank you for adding that.
Absolutely.
I do. Commented on that. Good job.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Questions? Thank you for the report, Phil. Okay, now we have the planning director, Joseph Typle.
Thank you, Mayor. Trustees. My regular monthly report starts on page 89. Somewhere to fill up, I'm just going to highlight three topics. And then if you have questions about anything else in there, please feel free to ask. The first is I wanted to call attention to item number one on page 89, which is planning commission. They received a presentation from some experts in urban renewal authorities and tax increment financing at their March 15th meeting. And it was a really in-depth presentation, extremely interesting. The commission was very fascinated by the topic. So I thought it was worth calling out because it's a topic that Buena Vista has not pursued in the past, but it's available as we look at strategies for our community and to achieve the values and the goals that we have. It's a potential strategy. So I wanted to call attention to that. I'm happy to pass along that slideshow that was given at P&amp;Z and at your direction. Obviously, we can talk about the topic.
Excuse me, but while we're on this topic, can you just give us a very quick idea of what that involves?
Yeah, at its most basic level, urban renewal authorities and the instruments they use for incentivizing development, tax increment finance are focused on commercial development. So whereas we have a whole range of subsidy options and programs and local, state, national funding sources for housing development, residential development, there's very few. there's very few incentives in that space for commercial development that are not loan-based, right? So urban renewal authorities are a thirteen-person board that's assembled from representatives of special districts that are present, right? So for us, it'd be town, sanitation district, school district, representatives like that. You basically take a baseline of what your property taxes are at the moment, you create a plan area, development that's going to come in and increase taxes above your base. You look at that increment, the difference. If this development happens, we're going to get this many taxes coming in. If it doesn't happen, this is where our baseline is. The difference is what they call the increment and that's how they, urban renewal authorities then offer incentives through grants or loans to developers saying, hey, if we're going to get fifteen million dollars more taxes over the next ten years because of your development, we'll give you one point five million dollars. I'll pay for infrastructure. And without that, maybe you can't do your project, right? But we're all going to gain that eighty-five percent or seventy percent of future taxes. So that's a very basic idea. The second topic I wanted to touch on from my report is Carbonite Street. Just a brief update that we are in the throes right now of the fun project of kind of conceptually putting together program design and conceptual design for childcare center. So Fading West has hired R T A Architects, which is a firm out of Colorado Springs that has a huge amount of experience in designing E C E centers around the state and the region. And they have partnered with us. Shining Mountains Montessori has joined us from a local perspective just to lend perspective on how many children do we want to serve? What does the space need to have to meet licensing requirements? And then can that fit on the property that we're talking about? So we're going through those basic exercises right now. And the result of that will be schematic design set for the entire building, right? Floor plans, adjacencies, playgrounds, all the requirements for licensing and construction documents full on detail for the core and shell, right? Which is what we've all been talking about throughout that project. So it's really an excellent example of the commitment to design and the community benefit on the childcare side that you all have been directing as part of this project for a long time. So that's very exciting. The other topic, I think there's a couple of questions that came over email the past week from trustees around the idea of tenant selection for the project. And so I just wanted to touch on those briefly. And first, mention that those are terms of the de restrictions. So the de restriction document, you all saw an illustrative example of that document at our February twenty-eighth work session. That details requirements around how tenant selection is done. The way it's drafted right now, it's, it's referring to the J P Housing Authority's community guidelines. And their guidelines detail how you, how you verify income eligibility, who we want to house, residency requirements, employer requirements. There's priority weighted matrix in those community guidelines right now for things like parents with kids, right? They would have a little bit more priority in the matrix than a single adult. Miracle volunteers that we know are volunteering and getting a very low wage, they might have a little bit more priority. So that community guidelines is developed and approved by the housing authority is what's conceived right now to be the basis for tenant selection. The rest of the detail on the de restrictions can and should speak to other priorities that can be mutually agreed upon between town and fading west. Examples of that that I think get to a couple of the questions raised are what role, if any, should master leases play in the project? And what I mean by master lease is an entity, whether it be a business, whether it be town, whether it be fading west itself, whether it be other entities, other employers that say, I really need housing and I'm going to pay for that as an entity and then place my employees there, right? That's a really excellent strategy for workforce housing for many employers. It helps give them certainty that they have housing and flexibility to make sure it's available when they might be approving someone. On the other hand, it's a very tangible thing we can define. And de restrictions, should there be a desire to say how, what place do those have in this project? Should we be allowing entities or businesses, employers to have leases in the project? Maybe yes, maybe that serves a very good portion of our community and our need, but maybe not the whole thing, right? Maybe we don't want the whole thing leased up by one entity or two entities or five entities. So there's parameters that we can work on and negotiate as part of that de restriction document that helps give certainty to you all about what the project will look like on a daily, monthly, year basis. So I wanted to just briefly talk about that topic and say that it will be legally binding in the form of the deed restrictions. That's the place where we will have tenant selection detail. And there will be a relationship or in my opinion, should be a relationship with the J P Housing Authority and the way that they are doing business, right? We've all acknowledged and created that entity to work in this space. And so I think there should be a relationship there acknowledging the restrictions. But there should also be contingency, right? What happens if the housing authority doesn't have the capacity, for instance, to help? Or if it changes course, something like that. So those are all implications that we get to talk, talk through in the instructions. And that document, obviously, those details will need to be approved by you all before it goes moving. Are there, I'll just pause there. Other question on that topic?
The only thing I was notice is maybe if possible, if everybody else, whatever, screwed up, but doing maybe a work session, the fitting with C J and obviously or just kind of maybe trying to talk that out a little bit ahead of time versus last minute type or coming down to the wire. You know, just to, just go through it a little bit. If anybody's interested in the work session, I think that could be helpful for maybe that section of the developer agreement, deed restriction agreement. Just a thought. So that's it. I just a comment. Thank you.
Anybody else have carbonate straight questions?
No, this is helpful. I was one of the ones who wrote in because I had a question that was sent to me, my mail as well. And so this is a thing helpful to have the open discussion on that. So any questions people do have or you know, thoughts about what could be happening behind the scenes or whatever, or at least address in all the forums. So I really appreciate it. It's, it's thorough and answers any of the questions that popped up. Great.
The final topic I just want to touch on from my staff report is on page, bottom of page ninety. It's really touching on and sort of elevating so that you all are aware that the county building department and development services department is actively working to present or make ready the proposal to adopt new energy code and new building codes. As you all are probably aware, municipal code, chapter eighteen essentially delegates our building official duties to J P County, but it also says which building codes, energy codes, we as a community are going, are using, right, as a basis for our codes. So any adoption by the county of new codes, whenever, if ever that happens, would need to then also be approved by you all. It's not mandatory. You all could choose not to do that or you can choose to amend things or take exception to various parts of the code. So it's not a, it's not a black and white, yes, no, all or nothing decision by you all. It needs to be understood and weighed as a part of the context of what's going on. So I just want to bring that up. My understanding and there's some staffing turnover at the development services department in the county as well. They're looking at doing this, this year. They were trying to hit a June thirtieth adoption date. That probably won't happen. But regardless, I think there's, there's momentum at the county to raise this topic and to pursue adoption of both new energy code and new building codes by the end of the year. So for reference, we are countywide currently on the two thousand and six international energy conservation code. That's five issues behind. It comes out every three years, right? And we are on twenty fifteen international building codes, residential and commercial. So the county is contemplating bringing both of those up to twenty twenty-one. Some of this might bring into play the adoption in the international code council of twenty twenty-four codes, which could happen sometime this year as well. There's a pretty big impact, as you might imagine, to everything building when we talk about jumping five code issues. So I just want to elevate that now and elevate the topic that we need to as a town thoughtfully consider. Whenever we look at adopting new codes, how is that applied to projects that may have already gotten development approval from town, like say a site plan, but have not gotten building permits yet? It's a very natural delay in that process. And yet building could change between those two things may affect the site plan and force a recent metal or reapplication. So I just want to call that up. I don't have any, you know, firm timelines. I have invited the county at whenever they're ready, whenever, I think a work session with you all would be appropriate to work through codes, right, and implications thereof. But I want to elevate the topic.
Joseph, do we have any option to adopt an intervening code? Or has that ship sailed in terms of like being able to adopt the two thousand and eighteen code versus the two thousand and twenty-one code?
So state legislation was passed last year regarding that. And that's the June thirtieth deadline the county was trying to hit. So the, the legislation says that if you pass to adopt a code that's within the last three issues, so back to twenty fifteen, by June thirtieth, then you don't have to adopt new codes until if you change anything in your building codes, right? At that future point that you change anything, you have to come up to at least twenty twenty-one. So the mentality of the county has been, let's adopt an intervening year code by June thirtieth and hopefully buy ourselves some more time, in their words, to not have to come up to twenty twenty-one. I think there's other land use code and building code amendments that county as a whole is looking at that will not be ready by June thirtieth. If those come through after June thirtieth, they would then kick in amending building codes up to twenty twenty-one. So there's, there's sort of conversation right now about, is it really worth trying to force June thirtieth deadline for an intervening code now when we might have to change again soon? Or should we slow down a little bit, do the research, have the conversations publicly that are needed? And then move to twenty twenty-one in a thoughtful manner later in the year. So those are conversations. By no means am I the decision maker in the county processing. That's what's been talked about.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question for Joseph. I feel the water, the meeting on March twentieth, the allocation discussion.
Yep.
And we're preparing for another work session further down the road. It'd be really great to have some of the developers come in and voice some of their ideas, you know, to be part of that discussion to kind of help us out with this whole concept.
Absolutely.
Planning on doing that, but it'd be nice to have their, their input.
I, I know they would be eager to participate and I might just ask for a little bit of direction. Would you all? I might prefer to try to find one or two representatives that might be willing to help share thoughts from the group versus having a larger group that might be a bit over.
Yeah. Yeah, that makes, that makes sense. No, it sounds good, Joe. That'd be great. I think that'd be enough.
Yeah.
And just to point out that that meeting was taped, correct? And so any of the board members that want to watch that meeting that occurred, that'd be really valuable to you, I think.
This is the March twentieth meeting?
Yes.
And how do we do that?
I'm happy to send probably do it through Google Drive because it's a large file, right? I'll send that. I can send access through Pollux.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Any other questions? Well, thank you, Joseph. Great report. Do you want to talk about the page ninety-one at all? This is with the various developments?
I don't necessarily have anything to add on that, except that one of the topics raised in that March twentieth meeting was a desire to add more nuance to this, this kind of idea, right? This dashboard provides a pretty singular snapshot of like totals, right? We have total a lot and this is total of what's being talked about at the moment. But it doesn't provide any idea of timing, when things are, might happen, when S F Vs might be dedicated versus when taps might be physically connected and how that, how that interacts with our water availability. And so that more kind of in-depth chronological modeling was a desire from the developer launch and something I think makes a lot of sense. So that's something that we have on our, on our, on our lenses to try to prepare for that work session with you all would be to have some sort of, you know, first step at a model like that. It would provide a bit more nuance to this and bring time in the picture. As we've discussed before, it's always theoretical exercise, right? There's always changes, but I think that information could be helpful. So as a bit of a tangent, that's my only.
Good. Thank you. So does that conclude your report?
It does. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The next item is a public hearing. So I'd like to open the public hearing. This has to do with the rezoning of the Colorado Center P U D to light industrial zoning. And I would like to hear first from the staff on this.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I will sort of start with a broad introduction from staff and as you know from the packet and apologies for the packet. The packet was, I think, a hundred and twenty pages. So, sorry, my portion of that. So staff is both presenting as staff and town is the official applicant in this case. I will acknowledge and I'd like to give the opportunity to what I call a co-applicant, but really one of the other voices that helps spearhead this topic. It's the estate of Ron Sutter, his son Mitch Sutter, aided by Dan Cooper. And so I believe Mr. Cooper is on Zoom with us and in a moment, I'd like to let him say a couple of words if he'd like to. So really to, to start off, as I mentioned, town is, is the applicant in this case. We are requesting the rezone of the Colorado Center P U D. Essentially looking at moving away from the car, from the P U D to light industrial. And when you look at that area of town on the zoning map, obviously, everything around it that's within town is either industrial or the airport district. So the request at a high level is to essentially simplify the playing field, simplify the rulebook. I meant to bring my physical prop, which is a three-ring binder that we have in the office for Colorado Center P U D. It's literally that thick of all the rules, regulations, wellness standards that have to be followed by folks doing projects in that, in that area. But I forgot to bring it. So in its place, I provided you a hundred and twenty pages in your packet. So with that, if, if Dan is on the line, maybe.
And which number do you think that is? Is that the S?
For a second, the red one.
No. Maybe he's calling.
I see. Yeah, he was on there before.
So maybe we'll just monitor or maybe if you.
If, if they can hear us, they can raise their hand.
Yeah, absolutely.
So that we can identify who they are. So if if you want to just kind of raise your hand, there should be a hand to raise.
If you're on the phone, I think it's star six.
Star nine.
Star nine, thank you.
Of course, hit star nine if you're following it correctly.
So we'll keep looking for that just to honor you all's time. I'll keep, keep moving for the moment. So I did prepare a little bit of presentation. There we go. Yeah. Dan, if you can hear us, you are allowed to talk. Unmute yourself and go ahead.
I'm muted. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, good. Well, thank you very much, Joseph and Mayor Fay. I am, although in, living in Colorado Springs, I am still affiliated with Summit Realty and a member of the local Realtors of Central Colorado Real Estate Board. I've been working with Ron well before he died. And as you know, he passed away June fourth of last year. Ron was a visionary architectural engineer. Ron was a visionary architectural engineer and advocate for education and care for the elderly. And these are the qualities that enabled him to create the Colorado Center. However, with Ron's passing, his son Mitch is the executor and personal representative. Believes it's in the best interest of the estate and the other property owners. To rezone the PUD to a light industrial category. And frankly, it's a category that's most consistent with the lots that have been purchased. It is my understanding that the town shares a view that it is in in all best interest. To do the rezoning. And I would just like to conclude very briefly. To say that really on behalf of of Mitch Suther and and the estate of Ron Suther. Let me say how much we appreciate what Joseph, the town staff. And the attorneys have done to get us to this point. And I think it is a classic and one for the records, a classic example. Of private working with public to make things happen that are best for the town of Buena Vista.
Thanks, Dan.
So if if you have the presentation that I had prepared, Paul, I had sent it out. While while they're working on pulling up, we'll kind of dive in. So as as Dan mentioned. The idea of rezoning away from the Colorado Center was first brought forward to Mr. Suther himself by myself. And Mark Doring about a year ago, just over a year ago. And it was in response to challenges that Mr. Suther was experiencing and trying to. Not only sell property in the PUD, but also to develop property. And to complete work that had been started but not finished in the PUD. And that challenge really stemmed from all those rules and regulations that when they were adopted. And what when Mr. Suther sort of brought them forward and envisioned that. We were in a much different landscape, not only as a town and a community, but also regulatorily. That's a word. We did not have our current UDC, right? We were operating under an old code. That did not allow for, in order to address many of the different aspects of what Mr. Suther wanted to do. With the adoption of our UDC, there's been a huge change toward allowing. A lot more straightforward development in a way that probably. I won't say negates the reason and the need for the PUD. But it definitely allows for a lot of things that PUD wanted to do that weren't allowed at the time. So when we think about why a PUD was established, it was because what he wanted to do wasn't allowed or contemplated in our code. Now, the things that were contemplated to do in the PUD are mostly allowed in our code. Through the Light Industrial Zone District. So at the very base level, that's the reason for this. Why this rezone structurally can make sense. And how staff and PNZ have reached our recommendation that you all should approve this. A really quick background, Mr. Suther formally got the PUD approved in 2007 by the town. It was originally, and it included 153 acres. Today, it's owned that PUD land is owned by 10 unique owners, including the town. It was originally envisioned to promote data science, technology development together with open space and amenities. Including senior services, education, those types of pieces. And it was supposed to be built out in eight phases that were meant to be completed by the end of 2009. Fast forward to 2010 is when the development agreement, which we'll talk about a lot more, was actually approved. And then the really one filing of the first phase was approved in 2010 and then amended in 2016. A second phase was given preliminary plaque approval in 2019, or sorry, in 2016 as well. But actually expired because no work was done on that. Preliminary plaque expired in 2019. One key piece, and right now I'm on the fourth slide. Thank you all so much for finding that one up. One key piece that I want to acknowledge is the interconnection between the PUD, which is the zoning rules and the zoning text. And the development agreement or the DA, right? These are two different documents, as you all have in your packet in their entirities. But they are very much connected and speak with each other. And so tonight before you are two actions that you can consider. The first is ordinance number seven, I believe, which would actually do the rezoning. So in essence, that would change the color on our zoning map, right? We'd be getting rid of the PUD as a zone district. But we would still have, without the second action, the development agreement placing rules and restrictions on that physical property. And that development agreement has vested rights or is in effect until 2030. So without the second action tonight, which is resolution number 25, I believe. That development agreement will continue to be in effect. But we have agreement from all but one property owner. Both the rezone and the termination of the DA. And so effectively, by passing resolution 25, we will be able to get rid of those rules and regulations on all but one property. And that would, we can dive into that later. So I want to acknowledge that there's two actions, two pieces. And obviously, I hope that Jeff will speak up and correct me anytime I misspeak. Next slide, a really basic overview of the rezoning process as it's outlined in our code. The topic was discussed between, as I mentioned, Ron Suther and myself, Mark Doring about a year ago. No action was taken upon Mr. Suther's passing and his son taking over the estate and working with Dan Cooper. That's when it really started taking sort of shape of, yes, there's actually interest of the largest landowner, which is still the Southern State. And there's actually interest from the other landowners as well, save for that one. So that's when the application really kicked off. We were, it was formally submitted in September by Mr. Cooper in the Southern State. And then working with our attorneys, we decided that it made more sense for the town itself to be the applicant. And so that's when that transition occurred. We were in staff and legal review, as you can imagine, for quite some time. We didn't want to rush this forward. And we really needed to understand the relationship between the PUD and the DA. And by we, I mean myself, obviously, our attorneys understood that very well, and a lot of it was educating me around that. So we issued public notice, as per our code, we held our first public hearing with PNZ. That took place, I believe, in January. And then between that time in which PNZ unanimously recommended approval of the rezoning. We worked with all the other property owners to sign, they all have signed that termination agreement that's in your packet. And so the only thing missing is the mayor's signature. And that would be what would be authorized in a resolution 25. So that's what we've been doing since the PNZ decision and why we asked you for more time, I think a month ago, to continue this hearing. Next slide, we'll look at the criteria briefly. Rezone criteria, we talked about this, I think, one or two meetings ago with Corolla Park. It has sort of two parts in our code for criteria. The first are four criteria that it just needs to meet one of them, right? And so that's that upper area of the screen. As long as one of those applies, or you all find it applies, then you can move on. Staff and PNZ have found compliance or or you know, consistency with three of those four. The fourth one, which says that there there is an error in the zoning code. While we felt we could make an argument for compliance there, given that the PUD no longer applies. With the passage of our UDC in large part, we didn't feel like that was in the spirit of the code. So we said that was not compliance there. And then the second part or the lower part of the slide basically says both of these conditions need to be met in your view. So it's sort of one of the four above and both of the bottom. Again, staff and PNZ have found compliance with both of those on the bottom. I'm not going to go through the detail of how we think compliance is being met. It was in your packets. We're happy to dive into that, should you have questions on that. Really, that's the end of my presentation. The next slide, just, I think it has more questions.
Okay, trustees. Do you have questions for the staff? I wanted to ask about. That it's, you kind of describe it in the in the top, top full paragraph on page 96. The requirement, Mr. Suther designed and constructed water main, that will actually fall. The end of that paragraph, it sounds like that may fall. In part, subpart to town. And that we may or may not, it sounds like, be able to recover some costs from others who connect into it. Though, that's probably my only real big concern with this is that. That I don't know what a water main costs or water lines or what all that does, but it sounds like it could be potentially a very big expense for town. That may not be recouped in any significant way. And is there any sort of cost analysis that can go with that or any? I mean, I don't want to hold this up. I think it's a smart idea to do this rezoning, but I just think that's that's an outlier that could end up. Being pretty difficult for us.
Absolutely. So the the section of water main in question goes from the Public Works facility, more or less. Westward along Greg Drive to Rodeo Road and then northward on Rodeo Road to Redtail Boulevard, Sunset Vista. It's a total of about a mile. And yes, it would be very expensive to install that water main. Town's policy, as you all know, is that development pays its own way. So I felt it prudent to make sure it was acknowledged that currently in the Colorado Center DA. When that particular parcel, which is south of Public Works develops, that's the trigger in the development agreement. For the installation of this water main.
Okay.
Obviously, in the in the original PUD, that was supposed to be done by the end of 2009, that would have happened 2008, 2009. That parcel of land, I think it's about 35 acres, has not developed. And my understanding from our engineers is that. In order to meet water demand flows and fire protection flows. From an engineering hydrology standpoint, that water main would need to be looped in order to serve development on that parcel. So while we are losing that term of the DA, we should do all pass resolution number 25. The reality is that our policy, the development pays its own way, is still in place. And therefore, town, I, you all would be the decision makers, right? You could choose to spend the one, one and a half million dollars to put in that water. There may be other benefits to doing that. But it wouldn't need to be a proactive decision made by town. Void of further development in that area. And if further development is going to come in, it would be our policy. That, hey, you need to be able to serve your property with water. And your engineering says that you need these flows. We can't meet those flows with that water line. That water line is your responsibility. In doing that, whoever does it, we have cost recovery mechanisms in our code that allow them to record. A share of the cost of that project against benefiting properties. So if you can imagine that mile of water line, there's actually only three or four benefiting owners. The SDA, construction, the town, and a few other private owners of various land parcels. So all of those would have this cost recovery recorded against them, and should they come in for development, they would need to pay their share.
Okay.
To back to the developer. So there are mechanisms like that that I'll lead to. Where you can recoup some or all of the cost that isn't specifically related to your development. But all that's a part of our normal code, our normal processes and procedures as states.
Okay, thank you.
Good question. Just see if I understood this right. The other affected property owners do not pay for that water line until they choose to develop. Is that correct?
So are you talking about the other property owners?
The other property owners that are going to have to pay their share. If they own the property and they're not developing it, do they not have to pay that until they develop?
Correct. That's the that's the current way that our cost recovery works. And and in, you know, depending on which way you view it. The lack of infrastructure is a prohibitor of development many times, right? If a developer wants to do a project in that parcel. And they find out they have to pay one, one and a half million dollars to install a water line. Even if they may get some of that back in the future, may be an outward word. That's a burden, right? Just as it is with any other developer in town that wants to build a project that doesn't have infrastructure, they're required to pay for that.
Just to bank off that, does the town own any land along where this water line? Was supposed to be placed by Mr. Suther?
Yes, well, we, so if you picture Rodeo Road. We own the rodeo grounds. And we own the 38 acres adjacent to to the north of rodeo grounds, between the rodeo grounds and Sunset Vista. So. We probably own a third of a mile worth of frontage.
So then technically, if we wanted to do something out there, we would be the people paying for the water line. So without Mr. Suther doing it, which he was contracted to in his DA. It's now potentially going to fall on us to do ourselves, since we own a portion of that land where this pipeline is supposed to go.
Yeah.
Okay, so great food for thought. Few other questions. So I know the search and rescue base up there, it's a nonprofit. What happens to an entity like that? If this turns into, was it the I-1? So I think they own their building, but the land, I think, they lease. Does that?
There would be no impact on any current buildings or operations.
Okay. And then I think, so Sue asked about the water line, which is one of my other questions. My last one is, it says that there was also, I think approximately 30 acres of open space land that was supposed to be dedicated to town. So we would also lose that if this disappeared.
Yeah, and I think it's important to distinguish that that's a written obligation in the contract. Town does not own that today, nor could we own it unless the land. That's associated with it in the PUD and the DA were coming for development. Then it would be negotiated as part of the development to design it, build it, dedicate it. So, yes, we lose that theoretical 30 acres. In its place, there's requirements for open space for development under our Light Industrial Zone District. So if the PUD and the DA are gone. Those open space requirements that are in our current code would apply. So we would still, there would still be open space. It is not to that same degree. I think that's 18% of Colorado Center land area. And that open space requirement under Light Industrials, 10%. So there's 8%, theoretically, if land comes in for development, that may not become open space. Part of our conversation in both staff and PNZ was the acknowledgement of the rodeo grounds. Now with the rodeo grounds master plan just down the street, asking the question, does town have capacity or the entire additional open space? That we need to manage and maintain in the Colorado Center. And staff and PNZ felt like that was an acceptable theoretical loss, given the other infrastructure we have as a community.
Yeah, I just sometimes think with, I mean, if it's a chunk of land that town could use one day, who knows? Maybe it turns into another potential carbonite street, though it's not zoned for that now. I've learned of anything is possible here. And, you know, I'd be ashamed to potentially do something like that, so.
And just to clarify, we could not develop open spaces, carbon street. It's dedicated as open space.
Forever and ever.
Yeah.
Okay, so that can't change.
No, we would not. We would not be accepting open space and then trying to develop a house, a project on. So I don't want to, I don't want to, we we are losing theoretical open space. We are not losing theoretical development.
Because I know with Cordova, we flipped that. Because that was, I think, residential, and that went to open space. That's why that can be confusing, where one can go one way, but the other can. Because that was, I think, residential, and that went to open space. That's why, that can be confusing, where one can go one way, but the other can go the other way.
Yeah, and, and I'll defer to Jeff here, where there's state statute requirements around open space specifically, and requirements you have to meet in order to get rid of open spaces versus converting into open space, and Brad can speak to that as well.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it could theoretically happen. You'd have to put it to a vote of the citizens to agree to, you know, turn the open space into something else.
That, that's helpful. It was confusing to me because we could do it one way, but if you can't do the other way because of additional rules such, that's, that's helpful. That's all we got. Thank you. Peter?
As of course, the one property owner that didn't want to join in, did they raise an objection to this at all, or is it just thinking about really the paperwork?
Yeah, and I won't try to represent their intentions, I can represent the conversation that I had with them. So, it, it's also a scenario in which the owner of the, the property had passed away recently. And the representatives of the state were also dealing with illegal construction on the property that did not get COs, and neither from town nor the county. They were dealing with a lot. And I, based on our conversation, there was a misunderstanding of what the effective opposition would be. There's an understanding that it would result in a change in how they could sell the property or not. But that there is a change, right? They can sell the property today, the property if this goes through. Either way, they would need to come into compliance with codes, which I think was the underlying fear issue there. So, we did not reach a resolution that, that let them feel like they wanted to participate.
And if they're able to then enter into the light industrial if they wish to, they could enter into it down the road, something like that.
So if, if both actions pass tonight, their problem, their property will become zoned by industrial. The color on the zoning map will change, but they have not joined the termination agreement. Moves and restrictions of the development agreement will still apply to their property, should anyone want to develop on it in the future. They can choose and ask town to terminate the development agreement on their property as a separate action in the future. So you would see the same termination agreement with their signature come before you, maybe even on a consent agenda, it would be at your call in the future. Or they could wait until twenty thirty, when those vested rights expire and the development agreement will go away.
Mayor, would you mind if I just added some more detail to my last response about the open space issue?
I wouldn't mind at all.
Thanks. So, so i- if the town was going to redevelop, say it had an open space zone property, it kind of depends upon how that property is dedicated initially, whether there's some kind of restrictive covenant on it. But assuming it's just open space property, the town does retain the ability to rezone property from open space to something else. If there's a redevelopment that occurs on it, yeah, a lot of the times it's going to involve a transfer to a developer or something like that. To do an actual sale of any property has to go to a vote. But to just rezone from open space to something else, it, it doesn't need a vote of the people. I want to make sure I wasn't, I was being clear there.
I mean, that kind of answered my question.
Okay.
Or the possibility of, could it be used for something else down the road if we decided or voted it to be that way? Didn't have there, was it, like we did with Bating West with the land dedication, and it sounds like that could be the potential same situation, anyway.
It's, yeah, it's possible, you know, ultimately rezoning is open space to something more, more developable, has political ramifications too, but it's, it's possible to do it. It's just, it just takes some steps, and it may not require a vote depending upon how you do it.
Any other questions or comments?
So just like, if something isn't in compliance with the code for the zone district, this one section, you know, they could stay as they are, but if they want to build, they would have to comply, or if they change anything. Correct? What is this one property that didn't want to go into, be breathing?
Yeah. So first and foremost, obviously, they need to come into compliance with the building codes that they're not currently complying with.
Right.
That, and our, our approvals include things like landscaping that are not in compliance. Those are all approvals that were issued in compliance with all the Colorado Center rules. So in order to come into compliance, they don't need to get more approvals, right? Or they wanted to change or do new development on the property, then we would need to go back into the development agreement and make sure that their development meets all the requirements of the development agreement.
Right.
Even though the zone would be light industrial.
Right. Yes. Just like when, between the zoning on the bollard blocks, if they wave it clean, they can build more. Yeah, that's not a good example, but.
Yeah, I did a good one.
Nice. One more thing.
Yes.
I guess it, like, I don't, I don't mind what, what they want at all, it's okay generally with the idea, I'm not trying to be a stick in the mud here, but I do hate the idea that we will lose the ability, or we'll lose the fact that Mr. Southern will not be putting in that water line, that connection, which is obviously very expensive. And depending on what moves further and where the development goes down the years, it sounds like it will be really hard to find somebody else to potentially do that. And if we have a majority of land on that, it's going to fall on our lap, which means we've got to come up with the, the funds to do that, and tax dollars and everything else. And so, I'm wondering if there's a way we could approve this, but we can make an amendment requiring them to still fulfill that piece of the deal.
And, and just to be clear, that the the trigger for that water line is the development of that specific parcel. So, there would be two things, and, and I'll look to Jeff here, but there would be two things required. One would be the owner of that parcel would want to come in and develop. That'd be the first thing. And then, secondly, we would have to try to get Bridgeway Development Corporation, it's called, Mr. Southern's Corporation, which is the actual development agreements with that, probably going back to the state to agree to meet the terms of the development agreement. I, I don't know, Jeff, if that's correct.
Yeah, I mean, the, the development agreements is what contains that obligation, and so that's kind of tied to the PUD, so we would have to basically do what's called a, a conditional rezoning with certain specific conditions, and we'd have to basically go back and try and negotiate another development agreement that would be a condition of this rezoning. And so, if that's what you want to do, we wouldn't want to rezone tonight with no conditions, we'd have to go back and renegotiate.
We would be negotiating, Jeff, with the state, which represents the Ridgeway Development Corporation?
Yeah. Are they the ones who own that particular parcel?
No. Tech, LLC or ACA owns that parcel.
Yeah, we'd, they'd have to be involved too then, if we're going to still have that trigger, be that parcel. So, yeah, we'd, I'd have to take a closer look, but I, we'd, we'd basically need to go back and make this a condition, and I, it would probably be the owner of the parcel that's subject to that obligation now, if we're going to keep it exactly that way. If we're going to basically try and change the obligation somehow to, to have other parcels share in that, or just sort of change the obligation altogether, maybe a different trigger or something that maybe, may make a little more sense if we're going to rezone, we'd have to negotiate it with all the affected parcels.
Anybody feel that same way? Well, I, I guess I have a clarifying question. So, the installation of the water main, if, if we do it, can we recoup some of the costs of that as things are developed? Or is it just the connection to that, that they would have to pay for?
We have a variety of different ways we could recoup costs. I don't know if we would use a cost recovery method, or if we would factor that into development fees. I don't know. I don't, Jeff, I don't know if you have thoughts on that.
Yeah, there's a couple options. One, one of the sort of main ways to deal with recovering costs for a main extension is that you, you have, it's called a cost recovery, is that any property that's, that's benefited by improvement, like a water main, is, is required to pay for a portion of the cost. And, you know, it's potentially, you can potentially do that as a special assessment, although typically it's a cost recovery agreement where the original developer pays for it, and then gets reimbursed over time as other properties connect to it.
But it still covers the water main itself, not just the connection to that.
That's right. Yeah, I mean, the connections to it are all paid for by the private owners of the property. Town never pays for service land connections.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
But, but then we could acquire that some portion of the water main itself is, is part of the agreement for developing or for connecting or whatever.
That's right.
Okay.
Is that, I mean, I'm, it bothers me, but I mean, I would love to have something in place so we get a boost there, but at the same time, I understand the point, and I understand these folks would like to move forward with that, and I respect that very much. I just don't want our, everybody else that doesn't own a part of that land and that area to be paying for the water main later on. So, that was supposed to be taken care of by Mr. Southern.
So, so who is going to pay for it?
Well, I mean, it would come down to, if the town were to do it, would, the entire community would pitch in different ways through taxes and other ways, and hopefully we'd find grants and things like that, but it wouldn't just come out in the air, you know, somebody's got to pay for it, and that's.
But wouldn't people pay for it? I mean, it's delayed, but wouldn't they, I mean, maybe I misunderstood.
Implement a cost recovery agreement if we're the ones to install it. We can report that against the other companies, I think that's what Jeff.
Okay, that's.
Yeah, so it could be the town that pays for it and gets recovered, or it could be the first developer that you require to pay for it and it gets recovered. There's a couple of ways to do it, depending on who pays for it upfront.
That's similar to the Ivy Week situation, I don't know.
No.
Indian Street.
Oh, yeah, that's what I meant.
Indian Street was a good example of, of the town installing the, the water line, and then a cost recovery agreement was applied to each property owner, and it was paid off over three years.
Yeah, it was something like ten grand or something per property.
Yeah.
And that's how something like this could get a water line in.
So at this time, with all we're doing with water, you're talking a million dollars, and it's free. There's no guarantee that we would have a three-year recovery period of that. If we ended up having to do that, can we afford to do that at this time? I did not, so.
And, and to be, to offer another perspective on that too, that there's no current plan by town or anyone else that would require that main. There are elements of the rodeo grounds master plan that would require water. It has one hundred percent in your discretion as to when and how that infrastructure might be put in place, and there's other developers on the north side of rodeo grounds that have shown interest in developing, that would themselves be required to make a big chunk of that extension. So, our options are not dichotomous, we don't have just two options before us. There are, there are many things that could come into play with when, how, and why, and who pays for a water main extension, definitely. Just not, not taking the actions here tonight, and obviously it's your decision, does not mean that Mr. Southern will install. That's not the logical result of, of not approving this. I, I just want to make that clear. More than likely, it will continue to just not happen. Just like it would be in your discretion to not have the town pay for it and just wait for a developer to do it.
Yeah, that makes sense. You know, it's, it's not like we're saying you can't develop here, it's like developers come just like they do with everything else. They need to contribute to the water line.
Are there other questions for the staff before we move on to seeing if the public has any comments?
Let me just point out one thing.
Please do.
So, right now, remember we talked about the big binder, that the PUD has all those restrictions? That land is bound to meeting all those requirements. But under light industrial, there are a lot less requirements. So by opening that area up to light industrial, you're encouraging more development in of itself. And if there are more developers that are going to consider that area, the PUD, and correct me if I'm wrong, Joseph, but the PUD dictates just one person putting in that line. But if we're opening that up with all the area being light industrial, there's more than one developer that would want to develop those areas, those lots, and maybe there's more than one that's contributing to that line. So in essence, you know, you're kind of worried about that line and not having someone to support all that, but I think by doing the rezone to a light industrial, you're really kind of also opening up opportunity too. That's just my.
And I think it would really come down to the engineering, right? I mean, I think you're going to be the ones to, both for the developer and our town engineer, to say, your proposed development either can or cannot be served physically, like with the water pressures and the volumes in the infrastructure that's in place today. Yes or no? If it's no, there's going to be requirements in order to develop that you need to improve the infrastructure. And I think to, to your point, Lisa, that's the review that would happen for all new development out in Colorado Center, and it may be that that loop is required to meet volumes on a parcel that isn't that one parcel, but that wants to develop, right? Whereas today, that one parcel is the trigger. Engineering review might show us that a parcel to the south of Bating West factory, for example, may require that loop to happen in order to meet their supposed needs.
Okay, other questions for staff? Okay, in that case, I'd like to go ahead and open, open the hearing for comments from the public. Are there anybody, is there anybody out there?
See, he can't play his songs at Zoom either, so. Not yet.
Okay. That case, and neither of you have comments? I'll close with a comment. Okay. Are there more comments from the staff or the board?
There's one more thing to add, I think. To the benefit of the town, if we move to rezoning, this is, you know, there's a cost to paying for water line, but at the same time, we don't really have a development there right now that we're looking at. And it may not even be appealing to develop, to develop there, given the current PUD, and it won't be that valuable of land to sell off possibly because of all these different concerns, but would you rezone it so that more businesses can move in, and there could be more property taxes and other things that we're collecting as a town, so there could be more revenue from freeing that up as well? Just another way to look at it in terms of, if we're looking at zero-sum game, ever. Approving, not approving, and there'll be costs, but we don't know if we're going to develop it, and why we're doing that down the road, whereas I think we do know this does open up for either more use or more purchases that will then lead to hopefully more economic growth in the area.
Thank you. Okay, I'm prepared to close the public hearing. So I'll do that, I'll close the public hearing. And then, does the Board of Trustees have any further discussion? Or would someone like to make a motion? Two things before us. One has to do with ordinance number seven, series twenty twenty-three, entitled, An Ordinance of the Board of Trustees of the Town of Bena Vista, Rezoning Certain Property Known As Colorado Center PUD From PUD To Light Industrial And Amending The Town's Official Zoning Map. That's the first thing before us.
I'll make a motion.
Motion.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have Row and Hilton Hingo. Should we do a roll call on this? Oh, would you call the roll, please?
Trusty Cobb.
Yes.
Trusty Hilton Hingo.
Yes.
Trusty Jenkins.
Yes.
Trusty LaCretzi.
Yes.
Trusty Rowe.
Yes.
Trusty Swisher.
Yes. Okay, good. That, that ordinance has passed. And then the second issue is, should the Board of Trustees approve the adoption of resolution number twenty- of resolution number twenty-four, series twenty twenty-three, entitled, A Resolution Of The Board Of Trustees For The Town Of Bena Vista, Colorado, Approving The Termination Of The Colorado Center Development Agreement. We have Cobb, Swisher. I'd like to do a roll call on that as well, please, Paula.
Yes.
Mr. Row.
Yes.
Mr. LaCretzi.
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins.
Yes.
Mr. Hilton Hingo.
Yes.
Mr. Cobb.
Yes.
Great. So that motion, that motion passes and the resolution is approved. Let's move on to the next business item, which is the DOLA Energy Impact Assistance Fund Grant Application For The Comp Plan. Uh, this has the ring of being Joseph again.
Thank you, Mayor. Very briefly, I think my staff memo is self-explanatory. As you all know, we're working on a comp plan and this particular DOLA program, which also funded our police station construction and water treatment plant expansion. They have a tier one, which is essentially a level of applications uh for dollar amounts up to, I think it's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And they go through a more administrative review process, not fully administrative, but it's less intense review process. Um, so that's the program that we'd like to apply to for planning dollars for the comp plan. Uh, we'd be asking for around twenty-five thousand. Um, you all approved as part of the current year budget, seventy-five thousand dollars that would be used as a match for that. And that's what, uh, resolution number twenty-five, I apologize, I was referencing the wrong resolution during the public hearing. Resolution twenty-five, um, would authorize us to submit this application.
Any discussion?
Um, I just have one question, no objection or anything, but you mentioned that the, in part, would be used to for municipal code auditing services. What additional code audits? I mean, is that kind of an ongoing process or, I mean, I know we just did a big one, so.
Yeah, so the, the way that the comp plan process often is carried out is the community visioning piece and the creation of a comp plan, comprehensive plan. Once that comprehensive plan is adopted, many communities then uh look back to their municipal codes, um, often the development codes, but there's other sections of the municipal code that may pertain, and ask the question to a professional consultant. If this is our new vision as a community and our comp plan, what are, what are things in our development code or municipal code that are incongruous or won't help us achieve those goals? And that's that, that's what this is referring to, and that's kind of identified in our phase four of our comp plan process. Would be once comp plan is adopted, we want to have finances and support from a professional to help make sure that our other codes and and laws as a town support what we said we want.
Okay, thanks.
There's a, a resolution before us. Is there a motion to?
Make the motion to approve resolution number twenty-five, series twenty twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have LaCretzi and Swisher.
Mayor.
Yes.
May I ask for further discussion?
Sure.
Doesn't, what is specifically, what is the match requirement on?
When it says twenty-five percent?
Of the one twenty-five or in addition to the one twenty-five?
Well, the, the total project would need to be, if we want to use one hundred and twenty-five thousand grant funds, the total project would need to be, I don't do math well in my head, but one hundred and fifty thousand or one hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Thank you for that clarification. Thank you.
Welcome. Um, we should do a roll call on this.
Mr. Cobb.
Yes.
Mr. Hilton Hingo.
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins.
Yes.
Mr. LaCretzi.
Yes.
Mr. Row.
Yes.
And Mr. Swisher.
Yes.
Great, motion passes. So now we'll go to item B under the business items. Um, this is the Carbonette Street Development Phase One Amendment To The Property Conveyance Agreement. Um, and there's an ordinance number eight, which is an ordinance of the Board of Trustees of the Town of Bena Vista, approving the First Amendment To The Property Conveyance Agreement Between The Town And Fading West Development. So we will consider adopting that ordinance. Who would like, does anybody have questions? Is there a motion?
A motion to approve ordinance number eight.
Is there a second?
A second.
We have Jenkins, Row. All in favor? Any opposed? The motion passes. Is that adequate without a roll call? I think so.
Yep, yep, that's fine.
Okay, great. All right, item C is to approve a change in the start time for all Board of Trustees meetings to six thirty P M. Is there a discussion?
Yeah, I have questions about this, so. It seems like after the special meeting, there are some things that are talked about that I don't necessarily agree with, with having work sessions on separate days. So would this meeting going early, would that mean we wouldn't have any work sessions before the meeting?
No, there could be work sessions before the meeting if they were half hour or less.
Well, because I don't agree with having work sessions on other, on other days, I would, I would tend to not want to have that change. I'd rather have the meetings be on those days. Because, you know, as you know, I don't work normal nine-to-five jobs, so having meetings on other days are, are difficult for me. And so, uh, for me to serve fully, I think it would be difficult to do those other days, so I wouldn't vote for a time change.
And I, I hear you on that. We will also be recording the work sessions and, and there will be times when people can't be there. So you, you know, you would be able to, to watch the recording at, at some other time.
Yeah.
As well. These are generally educational in nature or um, just, just things that we want to talk about without having to make decisions. But I certainly do understand your, your issue with, um, you know, having more than one evening.
Yeah, it's, it's preferred for me to just do it all in one evening, evening, even if it is long, because that is a great time for us all to focus, but if that's the will of the board, that's the will of the board, so I can try to make.
Watching a video compared to sitting in a work session, you're not allowed to ask questions.
Yeah, exactly.
You would lose the inability to ask questions.
Yeah, exactly.
Lisa? So, um, this item is really relevant to the, the meeting time just changing, which is part of that discussion that we had at the work session, um, after the training, uh, to discuss the background, ground rules. Um, I was going to bring up the work sessions and the email that Paula sent out for trustee interactions as a totally separate thing, but I do want to remind you that we are going to try and get you the presentation well in advance when it's on that separate night. If we do, if you do approve a separate night, which is a separate item from the six thirty start time, then you would have a chance to look at those slides and provide staff questions to ask as part of that work session too. That was kind of the thought process, like, think that we talked about as well. Um, in addition to being able to review the, the, the actual video before the actual meeting where you're going to make any voting decisions. So that, just want to remind you of that piece of it.
Yeah, I just think moving that time earlier makes it difficult to do anything on that same night, so. I'm not, I'm not for it.
Mayor, if I made it there also, the discussion was that if we did have a work session that was thirty minutes in length, we would start the meeting at six o'clock that evening. So if we have a thirty-minute work session on a second and fourth Tuesday, the meeting would start at six o'clock for the thirty-second work session, and then the regular meeting would start at six thirty.
Right.
And if it's helpful, I can give you the feedback that I was going to give you in trustee interaction about the, what everyone said and kind of our thoughts based on that separate work session. I don't know if it seems like there's leaking at least.
I think it'd be appropriate to hear about that.
Okay, okay. So it was kind of a split between option one, which was the second and fourth Monday of each month, um, and starting at six thirty. So two people work for that, and then option two, which was the first, third Tuesday of each month, starting at six thirty, was two people. Uh, but we had one individual that said, I'll go with either option. I'm finding it easier. And then we had one that said, I don't really like any of the options, but I do firmly believe that I would just like there to be just one meeting. And then, um, another that said I like having them on the same night, but I would pick if I had to on Monday nights. So I think we're leaning towards Monday nights. And what I was going to recommend is rather than having it to meet halfway, rather than having it to Monday nights that we set for that work session, we just do one. So we would just, instead of, we would pick either the second or the fourth Monday of each month, and just that one time would be that for any work session that lasts longer than a half an hour. So we would think about that, you know, like tonight, we knew this was going to be a big topic. It was going to be an hour. We probably could have spent an hour and a half, two hours on it, to be honest. That would have been one that I would normally probably pushed to that, to that optional work session. So that's kind of what we were thinking. I don't want to mold the two together because I still think there's validity to a six thirty start, whether or not you decide on, on that separate work session, um, night. But I do, I can tell you, we'll try very hard to give you the materials well enough in advance so that you can, you can make some questions to us via email that you might think that you have in advance based on based on that presentation.
How do you feel about the six thirty start time on the regular meetings?
I feel like it gives less time to do things before. I don't mind going at seven. Now, I don't really eat dinner at five o'clock very often, except on, on trustee nights, but you know, I'm not sure about how that would work. I s- I still think seven o'clock is fine, doing meetings before, but, you know, I don't, I don't, I have other opinions about the work sessions too, but if we do it on Mondays, I already, you know, I probably will, unless the times are different, I have orchestra four months out of the year on Mondays, so. It's difficult for me to be purposeful, you know, the alternative of, of the work sessions being, while it's posted early, you can ask questions, it's, it's not the same as being.
Yeah, or split really between Mondays and Tuesdays.
Yeah.
So does anybody really care whether we make it Tuesday for the work session? If we have to do an additional work session rather than Monday?
I think the whole point of this was so the nights don't go super long, so if we do, you know, that's, I think the whole point of why Monday was suggested, so we don't end up with a marathon evening.
Yeah, but it'll be the other Tuesday, it'd be the alternate.
You're saying the off Tuesday. Got it, I'm sorry. Okay, I understand.
Yeah, first or third, because then that won't mess up his orchestra practice.
Well, you know, it's like, do you guys want to have a meeting on a Saturday? Because that's basically what it is for me, because I usually have those things off, right? So it's, it's kind of, you know, either it's a day that I'm not working or it's a day that I have off that I'm sacrificing. So I'd rather just do it at the meetings. It's something that we've done forever. I don't perceive it being an issue personally, but, you know, it's up to the board. Try to participate as well as I can, depending on how the board decides.
What if we left the board meeting start time where it is, but if we ever have executive sessions, we do them at six? You know, some, sometime earlier, so we're not just fried by the time we get to the executive session.
We talked about moving the executive sessions to the beginning of the meetings, which we haven't had any that have arisen yet, but that was something we talked about. It was noted as, everyone wants to do that, so that's something I'm going to try. Let's move the, the executive sessions.
What's really killed us was the, there was one terrible night, you know, where everything just went off the rails, where we had, you know, work session, and then the meeting went on and on, and then the executive session. So it went way too late. And I'm really trying hard to not have that happen. And we're trying to, you know, look at the agendas better and, no, just trying not to totally load down any particular agenda.
I mean, if the work session is, if it's not desirable to do the work session, I guess the, the topic here on the agenda is the six thirty P M. And, and you don't do the work session, if the work session separate night is out of the mix, are you still willing, would you be more willing to start at six thirty? Because I think that that was, that sounds like the conflict is doing both the work session on a different night and then also moving the time back, so if it's a bit more. I don't know, it's up to you guys to see.
If we're having work sessions on Monday nights and we're having our regular board meetings on Tuesday nights, I would want the board packet to come out a day earlier, so we don't lose the time that we can devote to our package.
I wonder, I wonder if, you know, given what you're trying to do with the agendas and, and, and just streamlining the meetings a little bit, we could just leave it as is for a little while and see if those changes and maybe moving exec sessions to the beginning of the meeting, um, might, might be enough. I'm just thinking, still start at seven, at least time for a full hour work session if we need it beforehand. If we start with an executive session, that could throw off public, you know, the people who do come in for any reason, that's, that's a little.
There's a lot of people to please in this case.
Yes, there are, but I, I just feel like maybe we, I mean, if we can keep from being here till midnight, maybe even till it's eleven o'clock, then, uh, and if these changes are enough, um, maybe we just try to continue those and leave it as it is for a while.
Good work for Devon.
Yeah.
Good work for you.
That's my preferred, I think, I think, you know, personally, I think that jumping to all these conclusions are, you know, those are constructive ideas, but, you know, I signed up for this knowing that sometimes we're going to go that late, and sometimes they're going to be long and intense, and that's, you know, it's not preferred obviously by anyone, but sometimes that's just how it ends up and and, uh, but, you know, the agendas and the, the times have been much better since the, you know, gauntlet of a meeting that we all have nightmares about apparently, that we want to change everything right now.
Massacre.
So it's, I don't know, this is how I see it, it's like, you know, if we screw up once, do we change everything?
Yeah, and I'd rather not tie up another night of the week.
Yeah, exactly, you know, whether it's a night you work or it's a night you have off with your family or your, your loved ones, it's, you know, it's just committing another night of the week for us and as well as staff, so.
The one that, the point that we're voting on is on the six thirty time for all meetings, so, I mean, we work session on a separate night, we don't have to talk about that, I mean, it doesn't have to be.
Okay, does somebody want to make a motion about the, uh, item number C as to whether we should change the meeting start time to six thirty P M? Is there a motion anywhere in the realm of?
Start time.
Start time.
Well, I mean, to Devon's point, I think, moving to six thirty lessens the chance that we could do a work session beforehand or an executive session beforehand. It just limits us by a half hour, um, which then kind of pushes guarantees that we're going to be doing work session. It just limits us by a half hour, um, which then kinda pushes guarantees that we're gonna be doing work sessions on that day. I mean, I personally, I'd like to do them on, do them on another day so you're fresh, you're just focused on that one issue. But I also think as a board, we should, like personally, I, I remember it was like when I couldn't get off to get here on time and have to take P T O to get here and, you know, I think we all want every member of the board to be contributing factor, like feel like they're actually contributing. So personally, I think we should just keep it at seven, so we could do work sessions if we need to. And if it is a very long one or something we have to really focus on, then we could try to coordinate and make it work.
Mayor, I have one other comment, as long as we're still kinda grouping the two together. It's just, uh, I just remember in this spring retreat that we had right after I became a trustee, maybe before, for all I know, but, um, we talked about also, uh, we asked staffs to pay in on this because, um, Saturday work sessions were, you know, taking a lot of time from their families. And I think maybe I'd like to do that here if we can, just see, I mean, Lisa, you're obviously staff, but we have other staff in the room as well. But just because I don't know how many nights a week you are out at other types of meetings or that kind of thing. So if that, uh, that, that plays into that, really, it's still again more on the, the other, the second issue. But if they're gonna be intertwined, then I guess I would wanna hear if staff have opinion on that too.
Chase? Chase, do you have an opinion?
Uh, for the one night a month on the year, I'm good with whatever y'all do.
Okay. Annie? Okay, Lisa?
I, I signed up for this job and I knew there would be evenings and weekends and bowls. And so I'm fine with it personally, but I have, I don't have a family waiting at talks.
That counts.
Philip?
My opinion on this. Uh, no, I, I did, it, it's a, yeah, I've been part of this long enough to know. We've gone back and forth on this topic a bunch of times. Uh, it's hard to pick balance. Setting up another night, does that impact the staff? So that's a factor with doing separate works, work session evenings, um, or meetings. The, the start time, I think we're all pretty flexible, I'm flexible on that, I don't know.
Joseph?
Yeah, I, I would agree with everything people have said. I think the one thing that is changing versus how sort of things have always been done is the, the town is growing and the pace of growth is relentless. And regardless of growth, we are also maturing as a town, as an organization. The, the number of topics and the complexity of those topics is increasing. And I just think that there's, there's enough topics that need to be wrestled with, that time needs to be devoted on a regular basis to work sessions. If it's the same evening as regular meetings, that's, would be preferable from my perspective, again, like family and everything else. But I, I think, um, feeling like scheduling a work session as being sort of an extra burden or something we try not to do is, is not appropriate in my opinion, right? We, we need those, town needs those, you all need that time to contribute. Um, so regardless of which way you go, I would just ask that you proactively ask for what you're doing and, and are okay with coming to work sessions.
Thanks for that. Hala, you have an opinion?
I do have an opinion.
Okay.
First of all, I agree with everything that is said. But I also understand asking staff, as well of all of you, to give another night is a big demand. So we need to meet that compromise. Plus, we also have to factor in, you know, if you're looking at staff time, you're asking them to make a packet for a work session and a packet for the board of trustee meeting, as well as you all reviewing the packet. So we need to take that factor into consideration. So it just all depends on how much everybody wants to commit to. Because no matter what, with the growth of this town and everything that is going on, it is becoming more and more demanding for everybody. And there again, it goes back to really clear communication what everybody wants. If you want us to do it all on one night, if we start at five o'clock, that means we bring food in every night to start at five o'clock. But we do, all of us, you know, we're invested in this town. So it all depends on what kind of commitment we all wanna make. But yet still have a life and not get burnt out because, you know, trustees get burnt out, staff gets burnt out. But thank you for asking for our input.
Yeah, good idea.
We didn't give you any answers, but we gave you.
All right, this is becoming our longest item of the night.
Yeah, sorry.
That's good.
Roll through. I think it wasn't.
Is there anybody who would like to make any kind of a motion?
I mean, do we make a motion to keep it at the same time or?
No.
Or it's the same time, so we keep it that way?
I suppose we. Or you can just deny it if you wanna keep it the same.
Nobody made a motion.
Yeah.
So we can just skip this item.
Does the board agree to continue meeting at seven o'clock?
Right.
Do people, does everyone feel that way? I mean, do we want to?
That's why we asked.
All right, uh, trustee interaction. Okay, um, Devon, you have anything?
Yeah, I just wanna say, you know, thanks for listening to me and, uh, you know, for setting up and everyone working hard, you know? I think my personal opinion is that, yeah, that we're gonna, we need to use as much time as we have. And if it makes long nights, that makes long nights. And if we need to have a few extra days here and there to do, really devote to hard topics on a work session, I'm totally open to that. But to have it as a consistent thing, I think, makes it difficult for staff and, and for us as well. Um, so that's kinda how I felt about that. Shamsa here, I had a, a random thing that I've noticed in the last year. Almost, uh, I don't know if that's a highway problem or a town problem, but the, the whole Charles Street thing is definitely like a cluster. It's a one-way street. And if you're going north, you, there's no left turn lane. So I've definitely almost hit some cars and seen that kinda happen. Turning into Charles Street from the left, going north is like super hard. And it's a weird little area that gets a lot of traffic with Casa Sanchez and, um, barbecue place. And New Beach Chuck's gonna be there. So I was just thinking about that, um, recently. Um, I don't think I have anything else. I'm forgetting, 'cause I got all flustered with this whole work session.
Time change thing.
Thank you all, I appreciate you all.
Two quick questions. One, is there a work, a water work session, um, date yet? So I think I've been asking that for, I think, every meeting for the past couple months.
For the.
At the dates.
Yeah.
The ordinance. Is there a date plan for that?
Um, so the, the first thing that we were tackling was to get the developers then put, circle back with them. And so the next, I think, step is to take that feedback. And we've talked about a work session earlier. I think that's in the near future, that's one of those work sessions that we'll be planning. So, um, and I would like Cindy Cavell to, to be a part of that as well. Um, because I think that some of the, and you're welcome to review the link when Joseph sends it to Paul and she distributes it. But I would really encourage you to watch that meeting, um, that, that took place, uh, before that. And maybe it can be a part of the packet by, for the work session. But, um, the things that they were asking us to do, some of them, you know, they have, with augmentation and the certificates and rolling that into the conversation as well. That did come up at the developers meeting, um, as something they would like to see, not just, um, out, out of city, but in city. So there's a lot of things that go through that meeting. Aside from, from the water ordinance discussion, as other ways, um, to have a taste.
Am I able to make a motion to have a work session for Tuesday, the twenty-fifth of April? Starting at six o'clock, can I, I would like to make that motion if, if that's a fair and ministerial government rules.
Our teams can request a work session at any time, but whether it be a, a, a motion or not, you could.
Well, I have been requesting the work session, so. Okay, yeah, so at this point, I'm now to the point where I want to request, um, that, well, I will be ma- making a motion that we have the water work ordinance, uh, work session on April twenty-fifth. I don't know how much time's needed if we start at six, but I would like to make that motion.
Five o'clock. Uh, water, after being with you guys for five years, water is a hot topic and it doesn't get done in an hour. I'd rather see you guys start early and have some room on the back ends for good, solid questions and good discussions.
Okay, at five o'clock, I just wanted to have, so.
Joseph, did you have something you wanted to say?
My only request would be that we made that subject to Cindy Cavell's availability.
Okay.
So I think having a discussion without the water attorney would not be.
Yeah.
Okay, and can, can I just say, speak to that before we vote on it, I guess? Um, I, I also am really anxious to figure out this water dedication ordinance. I am concerned we are gonna get massive proposals from the people that were in the room tonight and others out there that are suing some of these developments and that they probably have some anxiety about getting their, uh, developments going soon. But, and they know that we're gonna be considering this. And so I am concerned that we're gonna have folks, uh, putting in proposals before we have a plan, uh, a plan in place if, if we end up doing some sort of dedication ordinance. And that it's gonna be, um, it's gonna be a mess. So I'd like, I really would like to see us both on this. And I guess I also feel like we're giving developers a little bit of an outsized, uh, opportunity to be informed and to, uh, have a say in this when, as I recall from our survey that we did on these, there were, was quite a lot of public opinion. I know a lot of it was, uh, the things that we've already voted on, but some of it was about, uh, you know, whether people should have to, to pay, uh, I mean, to develop within a certain amount of time after, uh, after they acquire water. And I just think we're in an environment where speculation is rampant in parts of, you know, the state. And I just worry that, that we're gonna be, that it's gonna cause a problem here. So I'm, I'm bored with that.
I wonder if we should have a, a work session and an agenda item on it.
Should we refer?
Too tight?
Uh, yeah, I mean, if, if you all are providing distinct direction in a work session that same night, trying to take action on that, we wouldn't have an ordinance together, we wouldn't. But I would ask that we not have an agenda item for, for decisions.
So I will, again, my motion is to start at five o'clock on Tuesday, the twenty-fifth of April for a water ordinance work session with all hinging on the ability of Cindy Cavell. Um, and I would appreciate a second.
I will second, sure.
Or you could have it on April eleventh.
Very.
Oh, you're gonna be gone, okay. All right, there's a motion on the table with a second.
For the discussion.
Yes.
It's a question for staff, is there enough time to get all the stake, stakeholders, you know, to, to get this together? There's just kind of a, I wanna make sure everybody's there, I just don't wanna, you know, like an H P C thing, we have people here, we got people there. Is everybody in the same room, do we have time to do that?
If we do, I mean, Cindy is, is easily the, the busiest and most occupied person that we've talked to so far about this. So I would wanna make sure she's there. I think if, if you all would like to have a couple of representatives in development community, there are other folks who want that conversation, we would need to know, you know, now, so we can make sure to line them up. But I know that folks in the development committee or community are very anxious to be involved in this. So I would know that we can get participation in there.
Sure.
We'd also talked about the financing community before, right? Cuz a lot of folks were concerned about the impact of expiration of water dedication on ability to get financing for projects. So, um, that's on, on the horizon or on my mind as well, as far as folks.
Think the water advisory board too, my first could reach out to them, so we get to have a discussion.
Yeah. See there also?
Yeah, would you like P and Z?
Yeah. You know, it's original.
Not tonight, I'd ask for that in the past. I'm happy with everybody.
So we had a motion, did you get the second just? Switch your heads. Okay.
Sorry. If I could, it just, for throwing P and Z in here and water and developers and finance for doing this, I'm sorry, Devon. On this one, but like if we're doing it on that Tuesday before a meeting, is there really enough time for five to six? I don't know, I just, I could see it going over if there's all those people there who are gonna have opinions and questions. Is this one that is better for that Monday instead? Or, I mean, obviously, again, depending on.
Do a special.
Schedule.
Do a special meeting for something like this too.
Or if we have a buffer for when the regular session starts, which I guess we probably can't given a bit of change. I don't know, I just, if we're throwing all these people in the mix, there's something I'm concerned that we're gonna truncate it. We'll have a presentation talk and then there'll be a lot of questions later on that won't be addressed.
Let's go more town college when we bring in that many people. May as well make it like a public town hall. So, I mean.
My hope for this.
Special meeting.
What I was really hoping to get out of this, and the purpose of this, is really just so we can finally have a conversation amongst ourselves with some key stakeholders, not everybody in their brother, cuz there will be time for that, I believe. But I think we haven't even had one chance to have the conversation. So I think if we can get Cindy Cavell and if two developers, as you had mentioned earlier, are able to free themselves up, which I'm sure they will since they are quite anxious about it, I think that would probably make the most sense, that we can go from there and see what develops. But I think what's most important is that we just get something going here. If nobody likes the motion, we can deny it and we'll vote, so, or we can prove it. Great. Continue like here.
Okay.
I'd be more inclined to be like, yeah, since we really need Cindy there to have it be April twenty-fifth or the first available, um, Tuesday before meeting.
We can find out Cindy's availability and send an email out through Hala and coordinate. I do know we have a work session right now, um, I believe scheduled for the eleventh. Tend to typically, there would be a half an hour, if we're staying within our ground rules, it will last a half an hour on that night. But I guess we're going to move to just having whatever length of work session it takes and trying to back it up to forty.
What's the work session on the eleventh?
Um, it's the fire mitigation, Chica County.
Vision, Chica.
Vision, Chica County.
This is motion on the table.
And a second.
Yeah, can we do a vote?
Yes, we can do a vote. Are we ready to vote?
Do, do we want to just make it pending Cindy's availability?
That's what's, yeah, right, yeah.
Do you accept that amendment?
Yes, I even made it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can we just get to, or we just keep talking?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We got one opposed, Mark Jenkins. Okay, motion passes.
I have another item.
Okay.
Um, also, and Jeff, this is actually for you, I think. So for, is the appeal conversation for the borough race next, um, agenda?
April eleventh.
April eleventh, okay. Um, I will be remote that, um, if I can, that, uh, that meeting. My able, I don't know how an appeal works, is that something I can still participate in via online presence or?
Yeah, you know, I actually don't really believe it's a quasi judicial, um, matter. It's, it's a little different, so like, my short answer is I'll take a look at your code again. But my short answer is you can participate remotely.
Okay, great, um, cool, thank you. And then I'll save my comments about that then for the actual, like, the appeal then.
Okay. Um, Sue?
Nothing more.
Okay, Mark?
Yeah, I had a question for Jeff about meetings. Um, I'm gonna be participating in a C L M webinar tomorrow. And I was just curious, um, as far as those webinars for C L M, because there's more than, uh, two of us, does that have to be? And I was just curious, um, as far as those webinars for C M L, because there's more than, uh, two of us, does that have to be a notice or anything?
You know, that's, I think that's a little different if you're both just sitting in a room, listening to a webinar. It's not really a meeting on public business, you know, so I don't think that's a public business type matter that you have to notice as a meeting. So I think you're fine.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Yeah, good question.
Okay, all right. Staff, anybody on the staff have comments they want to make?
Just.
Paul.
Milestones for those of us who were here on April twenty, April twenty twenty, when Devon Rowe and Amy Eckstein took their office. And the first item of business they brought up was retail marijuana. I am happy to say that P C G one did receive their retail marijuana license on March sixteenth, which we all know was a very long battle. And Adam Paul wanted me to make sure I tell Libby Fay that yes, everything is done. And they are planning on opening up Honor Before for twenty twenty twelve.
Mayor, I have a brief, uh, note that you all have a draft letter of support, um, in front of you physically. This was, uh, the office of U S Representative Brittany Pedersen, their community project program that, uh, the mayor and Gina has to apply for. Uh, we can have, you know, their staff reached out today asking for more information and for this letter of support.
Great.
Um, so, you know, you know, going through the process. So I would ask that if you all are comfortable with this letter, that you would authorize the mayor to to sign it. Send that letter.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, second.
So Row, Cobb, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So we really have Gina to thank for this, because she she realized that we had not applied to Pedersen's office. And when when Brittany Pedersen came to town, she was just practically begging us to apply for a grant. And so we go up and and Joseph managed to pull it together in just twenty four hours.
The eleventh hour, they did it.
It's really great to see her office and and her personally actually getting interested in twenty years.
Yeah, yeah, she's been the chief of county.
Something that we have not seen.
At least twice.
Long, long, long.
Yeah, right.
Forever.
Yeah, I agree. It's wonderful. So thank, thanks Gina, thanks Philip and Joseph for pulling this together. Yeah. So, um, I think we're about ready for a final motion.
Make a motion.
A second.
To leave.
Say another motion.
I'll take that as a motion to adjourn from, um, Devon, Row, and seconded by Cobb. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are out of here. Meeting is adjourned.